That's all I need. Good evening, would like to call the Windsor Board of Education Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025 to order. If we could please stand for the pledge and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. All right, before we proceed to audience the visitors, just for the listening public, we did adjourn the last meeting at 6:16. We needed a, we needed a 10-minute break just to make sure that the public was able to have the right link to the meeting, and we want to confirm that we had connectivity to YouTube as well as WinTV. All that has been confirmed, and that was the cause for our delay. With that being said, is there anyone online that wishes to be recognized this evening?
Yes, several attendees online, but no one has their hand raised.
All right, is there anyone within the boardroom wishing to be recognized this evening? Seeing and hearing none, online and in virtual, without objection. Close audience to visitors, any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Next is the budget proposal process, meeting number three. We have the purple sheet before you. We've had time to review the sheet. Are there any questions about the finance committee sheets for February 11th, 2025? There are a total of 18 questions. Are there any questions about any of the 18 responses from the board? Any questions? I'm seeing and hearing none? Is that correct?
Can you hold on a second here? Um, two seconds, I'm trying to try to understand the medical experience.
Ms. Batsholder, question number three.
Okay, so first off, Lockton is our broker, our insurance broker, who provides claims for us each year. So what you're looking at is just a bigger version of what they supplied me. So how they project claims, they go back 12 months, and then they go back another 24 months, and they compare the two years. So the, the lower part of the sheet is from November 2022 through October 2023. And then the top part is the past 12 months, November 2023 through October 2024. And it breaks it down by total medical claim cost, total drug claim cost, and then the total. And then also all of the plan expenses, so all of our fees for Lockton, for our stop loss. And then that's the second bucket. And then the, the final column is the total plan cost by month. So if you compare the 11.1 mil, which is the total plan cost for 2022 through 2023, and then compare that to the 12.9 million that we, and that was what we expended the past year, that is roughly 1.7 million increase from the prior year, which is one of the many examples that Lockton does through their actuaries to try to, to do projections for us. So that is an example of the $2 million increase that they're projecting for Windsor Public Schools for next school year. It's always based on prior claims. And this is where it's one of those things that we, we really did have a bad year, but does that say we're gonna have a bad year next year? We don't know that. And that's where it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough budget number to, to sit here and really try to figure out what to do with, you know, whether we add it to our total budget, or if there's some other way we can, you know, close that gap to make us whole for the whole insurance fund for the town of Windsor and the Board of Ed.
It's a question. Wait a minute, one, one moment, Mr. Madison. Mr. Panos, does that answer your question, sir?
Somewhat. I'll come back. Why don't you take a question?
Mr. Madison?
Um, it, it seems that, that the claims went up just in a group here in the middle of this from, let's say, March through July of '24, right? So it's quite a volatile set of numbers here. So, uh, I, I guess my question is, is so from, from this year, do you have any evidence that you are running out of money this school year?
Yes.
You do?
That, yeah. So Dr. Hill and I already met with Peter, Susan, Jim Bork, I believe, last Friday? Yep. To discuss this because they are in the same situation, they said, but obviously their, their numbers are a lot smaller. The percent is the percent, but it's a lot smaller dollar amount. And we're definitely gonna have to freeze our budget this school year to cover the claims that are coming in. Because so, for instance, Lockton is only giving us a projection through October 2024, but I can see our, our weekly bills from Anthem through ye- yesterday. So I, I can, you know, I could have added to this, but I didn't wanna, this is what they gave us, so I was trying to keep everything equal. But our, our numbers are not coming down. We're, I mean, we're honest, we're projecting roughly like close to a million dollars every month in claims. And I, in, from a stamp of, a standpoint of, you know, just being human, you know, we, we know our employees and we talk with our principals, so there are people that are unfortunately sick, so not, you know, out of nowhere.
Ms. Panos?
Yeah, uh, all right. I mean, um, we just base it on the past, is what you're saying. So if we had a, a number of unusual, you say, you say, um, it's just, I mean, why would there be continued unusually high claims? And it was last year, I mean, it was like 600 to 500, $600,000, you wanted, right? And I guess, I guess in the past, we've had some high ones, but generally speaking, they, the health benefit increases have been on the order of 3%, right? 2.85, 2, 3.1 like that. And now, uh, well, you know, last, last couple of years, it went to 400,000 increase, 500,000 is 600. And, and now all of a sudden, we have, uh, we're up to a $2 million or almost increase. So it, it, it seems like this, you know, may, maybe just sort of one-off or something like this, that we could, uh, probably, you know, come in with a lesser increase, despite this projection, which is strictly based upon these years from November, what? It's November 23 to '24 to October '24, and comparing that with the previous November 22 to October 23. So, um, it, it seems like it might be excessive, that's all. You, I mean, I guess this is what you, this is how you calculate it, but it seems like a, seems like a high number. It seems like a high jump, that's a
It is. It absolutely is. I mean, and this is how we've projected every year using prior claims.
Sure.
But now, because it's such a high number, it looks like it's skewed maybe, or i- it is a huge jump, but the way we're projecting today is how we projected every single year up till today. Um, and, you know, the Lockton is, that's what they do for a living, that, that's their, you know, expertise is, um, you know, calculating and trending these numbers and data. I don't think it's only to Windsor, which lends a question of, is just the health cost in general skyrocketing, or are more people getting more sick over the past couple of years? You know, Lockton can't give me a definite, and they even said, like, we don't, we can't even say it's because of COVID, now everyone's going to the doctor. They, they won't even say that. Cause they don't know why, why so many cancers are coming up, so many, all of these diseases are coming up, but they're seeing it across the board. Not to go down that road.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So I do insurance for a living. Um, so I'd be glad to go into whatever technical detail I need to. Can we get the, so one of the things you look at when you look at claims numbers is you break them down by frequency and severity. Can we get this same table with frequency? So that we understand what's causing it? Because you'll be able to pinpoint whether it's an increasing claims frequency, which is how much, how many events happen versus cost. So in other words, if you, if you look at a chart like this, and you see the same general frequency year over year, but the prices go up, that tells you people are having the same number of claims, but it's getting more expensive because inflation's insane. So I'd be curious to take this and have it broken down by frequency and severity, so that we can say, listen, if the claim frequency across the same time period looks about the same, it's inflation.
It's not inflation.
Okay. So is it, can we get the
I have that data, but I, the way I have it is complete, uh, that would be a complete HIPAA violation. I don't know how to give it to you without telling you what people have.
No, no. If, if it was at this grain, it wouldn't be a HIPAA violation typically. I'd like a ruling from the lawyer then on that. I think that's a legitimate question.
What, I guess, what exactly are you asking for?
I want to be able to understand what's causing these numbers to go up, right? And so if I could see the frequency and severity in these cells, because claim cost is a function of frequency, how often you get claims, right? And severity, which is how big are the claims, right? A full car crash, for example, just use auto insurance, is more expensive than a door getting dented. So if you have the frequency and severity numbers underneath this, you can trend the frequency and severity. And if your frequency, in other words, how often people are laying claims into these buckets, is about the same year over year, then you can say, okay, it must be inflation.
Are you looking for the number of claims or type of claims or both?
Basically, number of claims. It's
It's what Lockton does to get these numbers.
Yes.
You're asking to like redo Lockton's numbers.
No, no, no. This is actuarial science 101. I know what they're doing. And so what I'd like to get is the, is the amount of claims causing this effect, right? Because if the claim frequency is about the same, you can, you can differentiate how much is inflation.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you just want to know the, the number of claims?
Right.
Period.
In a, in a chart broken down similar to this, right?
Just the num, just so I'm clear?
Yep.
The number of claims, period. Nothing identifying, just the number of claims.
Correct.
Is that possible, Dr. Hill or Ms. Batsholder?
I guess I'm not, how do you?
For example, if
Number of claims isn't gonna tell you how much, what the claim is. It's what the claim is, is what you need to know.
Fair enough.
Because those are, you know, like hospital stays, five-day hospital stay, a birth.
I don't think he's asking for what type of claims. I just want to be clear. He just want to know how many claims.
What she's trying to tell you is, is not gonna match up.
Right. Nature of claims is my second question. Hold that thought. I get that it's a blunt instrument, right? And so, and, and the next thing you're gonna want to do, if you can get your, your frequency of claims year over year, is you're gonna want to drill down. I got that, right? And I understand that if at some point you drill down, you, you run into HIPAA, right? And so, and I, I've worked on medical privacy information for years now professionally, full-time. I understand all the restraints. Gotcha. But you typically can go down to a level of aggregation that still doesn't violate HIPAA or any type of PII or anything like that, and start to understand, are you getting more claims in here? So I'd be curious to know this in terms of frequency, but then there is the nature of claims. I want to make some questions, right? I'm not asking from the same artifact. But it is, I'd like to understand the nature, bucket the money by nature of claim.
Well, could, could you, for me, what do you mean by nature of claim?
So nature of claim is like cancer versus a side effect of an accident falling down stairs, that sort of thing. And typically, it's coded by ICD-10 codes, and you're, I'm sure you're familiar with that. So at the highest level, that's not typically considered PII, PHI, et cetera. So if we had a breakdown by nature of claims, it'd be interesting to know that too.
I, I don't think we're able to break down the nature of claims, right?
I have a lot of information. I would have to just ask
Ask to learn.
To, you know, to say here, look at this, Mr. Madison, is one thing, but to sit here and like announce it to, you know, I can give him my packet, but then I don't, I don't know how, how much I, how, where I'm, where I need to stop.
Agreed. I'm also fine if the lawyer has to wait. I'm also fine if we have to go to executive session. The reason I'm saying this is this is a severe cost, right? And, and the question starts to become, third question, is in going forward years, do we have any leverage to, to change our medical benefits? Knowing that, you know, it might be a retention problem because people want certain benefits, and I understand the negotiation, just live through it, right? But my question is not here, right? I, I get that you can't fight the actuarial tables. Been there a million times, right? But the question becomes now, can you shift your benefit structure year over year? So it's more of a future planning question. To say, what, what is the nature of the claim, right? The, the question of, okay, where is the money being bucketed at the highest level so it doesn't violate PHI? And if we knew the nature of claims, there is a possibility we can sit here and we say, next time we look at the medical, that would go on our questions. What levers do we have to shift the medical benefits and say, yeah, those are the most expensive, uh, but we don't cover them as a district?
So Dr. Hill, Dr. Hill, I'm gonna shift to you. Where, where's the line?
So where, we can get you the claims, the number of claims, but I can tell you one thing that's not gonna happen educationally when we're negotiating a contract. I hear you. That's what I was waiting to hear. So, and it's gonna sound terrible on the microphone, but I don't care. So school systems do not operate as coarsely as insurance companies do when it comes to their benefits package. Cause that's exactly what insurance companies will do. They will no longer cover a certain amount. I understand that. I was waiting very clearly, but a school system will not do that. As you learn, or you saw partially during negotiations, they're gonna look at what every other school district has. And unless the entire industry, which they're not, goes back that way, no one's gonna drill down to that. But I am very clear from my own experience and other half of my household, and that insurance companies particularly are horrible when it comes to what they do with their own employees, that they will look like that. And then you will notice in the next iteration or the next year, when you re-up, you no longer have this benefit or the amount of, that you can claim is definitely reduced. Am I reading it right?
That's fair.
Okay. So we can get you the number of claims and types?
Okay.
At that level, that's it.
Okay.
So I can say if there were, you know, this many claims with those numbers, that's it, and then we're not gonna go any further than that?
That's fair.
Okay.
Are we clear on that?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Oh, no, it takes work. I respect the effort, yep.
All right, so, um, Mr. Fury?
I just have a, thank you. I just have a related question to, to all this, and that is, I know it would be great if we could say, well, things aren't gonna get any worse. Can we just hold the line? My understanding is whether it's the town or the board, money has to be put into an insurance fund based on projections. Is that correct?
Right, yes. So as an insurance, a self-insurance fund, when you buy stop-loss insurance, you have to have a maximum of 125% of the expected claims in your health insurance fund. So whether that's us, the Board of Ed, with the additional 2 million, or if it's the town putting that money in, someone needs to put the money into the insurance fund.
And, and that 125% was calculated by our professional that we hire of what 125% would be?
Right, it'll change. And, and these numbers will get, as, as we get closer to April, that's when I'm gonna get the, the renewal rates for next school year. So, and again, like Mr. Panos was saying earlier, because everything is historical, we like to see when months drop off, a big month, then our number gets better. If we're dropping off a million month versus a $500,000 month. So again, everything is month by month. So that number for the insurance fund will be a discussion come April for, between the Board of Ed and Town of Windsor.
Thank you. Are there any questions online from any of the board members?
Uh, yes. Uh, uh, Mr. Wilson has a question.
Could you please read it for the group?
Oh, he has his hand raised.
I didn't see his hand raised.
Who?
Mr. Wilson, you are now recognized, sir.
He did have his hand raised.
Yeah, I was just asking, um, if we do by chance over-project, um, what the excess funds return to the town regarding this?
Well, I, I think I understand your question. If, if, if we over-project, for example, if we only spent a half million dollars, do 1.5 million dollars go back to the town? Um, I would, I would imagine
Is that the question?
Yeah, that's the question he's asking.
Is that really? Oh, is that what he said? He asked if whether the money goes back?
He's asking if we, if we, if we project 2 million dollars.
Yeah.
And my understanding, his question, if we don't spend all the money. So if my example is, if we only spent a million, do the other million go back to the town?
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that.
That's the question. Is that, is that, is that the understanding of your question, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah.
The, the issue is, we are already spending the 2 million. That's what I'm not, you guys, we are in the hole by 1.6 right now. We have to freeze the budget. So we're, we're hemorrhaging.
Okay.
So there's not of a
There's no surplus. Right now, we're, we're in a, we're in a hole, and that 2 million will make us flat-line going into next year.
So if I can just make it plain, um, this is an ongoing bill. So although we're budgeting with a, it's not fictitious, but with a very static start and stop date for our fiscal year, June 30th, right? Stop, July 1st start. The bills don't stop, and they don't work that way. So with Batsholder starting off, answering this question initially, when Mr. Panos asked, saying, you know, we're gonna have a freeze on the budget, and I think people kind of like let that gloss over, meaning the current year that we're in right now, this current fiscal year, the money that we have still in the budget currently that hasn't been spent in different areas, she's gonna pick a point to tell everyone in the district, you are no longer, you don't have these money. So the little bit of money you guys saw with the schools, right? Say, hey, frozen. Different departments, frozen. Because we are trying to meet a bill that keeps coming in. So this is not a, just a 2 million dollar bill that's waiting for us on July 1st. The money is moving now. That couple hundreds of thousands at a time. It is a bill that just keeps coming, and it's not lessening. So I don't know if that clarifies for you, but that's as clear as I can make it. The bill is happening now. The bill is not waiting to July 1st. No matter what we decide with our budget, the bill is happening, and we're paying it now.
All right. Mr. Wilson, does that answer your question, sir? I will go back to the board room. Any other discussion on this topic? Mr. Madison?
Can I clarify my ask a little bit? Um, just to, just to be clear, um, even if the year over year, right, just for the provider class, right? And can we get frequency and average severity? Yeah, I'd like to add severity. Average severity on, on the bucket. So all, when frequency and severity should be nothing more than the, the two components of the numbers that you see here. And then in, just in terms of the, the claim type, if we can use the 22 categories of ICD-10, they're, they're pretty standard, if that's acceptable. So I do want to say claim frequency, claim severity, by the, the top 22 categories of ICD-10 in the two-year periods that we have here.
ICD-10?
Yeah, international, something, something.
Just want to make sure Robin
It's the coding system. It's the medical coding system. It's pretty standard.
It's a code, yeah?
ICD.
ICD-10, that's what I'm
It buckets all your ailments. If you ever see the, it's a three-character code, you see it on all your medical bills and stuff like that. But 22, the, the 22 top level shouldn't be, uh, PHI-sensitive. And I respect if there's a, you want to check the lawyer and shoot down. But frequency and severity by the same time period, uh, at the 22 top-level ICD levels. Thank you. And if somebody, if, if we do think that's PHI-sensitive, then, then that's definitely a problem. I can understand that.
Any other discussion?
There shouldn't be.
Could you go over then why, um, you could not give us the particular ailment, since there's no name attached to it?
You asked the question, what's gonna happen next year? I have no clue what someone's gonna get next year.
Oh, okay, um.
I mean, I, you know, I
Okay.
That's how I understood your question. Like, what's gonna happen next year?
Yeah, I was Okay, I was, uh, okay, I guess you're right. I'd say, no, one way of interpreting it. The, uh, you know, could, could you give me what you have this year? Could you, the, those that are over the, the LAP, what do you call it?
The stop-loss?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that's gonna be gathered in the information that Mr. Madison's asking for.
Well, the question is, is it legal? That's the question.
Yeah, I mean, I have those, but again, I don't, any, if I say one thing, someone can, it's identi, it could be identifiable.
It's identifiable.
Yes, it is.
Yes. At that level, it could be
That, that's
Well, okay, but I I wouldn't have any idea who, uh, so all right, I guess. I guess I'm just not gonna know, that's all. So we're gonna have to go forward from this. We're gonna have to make our judgment based on that. We can see if
I'm with you, Paul. So two, two things. I mean, my request is to clarify my request further. It is based on the actuarial projections, right? So I get that we can't know like next year. I mean, if we want to look at this, this is historical in two different years. The, the challenge is this, right? The actuaries sit around and project next year based on the trends of the, the two prior years, right? So if these are the prior years, we're looking at the actuals. Never mind, now that I'm talking about. These are two actual years. This is not the, the actuarial projection for next year.
Correct.
Okay, but what's in the budget is the actuaries projecting to next year, correct? So this is two years of history, but what you're putting in the budget next year is a 12.9? No, you should be putting something scarier.
No, it, it, I'm increasing the, by 2 million, which the difference is 1.7.
Correct.
Right now.
I'm with you, but watch. If this is 2223, right down on the bottom? And this is 2324 on the top? We're building the budget for what, 2526? So the actuaries have to sit around and say, if I take all these numbers and trend them out, so they should have given us a number even scarier than 12.9. They should have given us something like, I'm guessing, like 13.5. They would do all the math. Right. So what, what's the number then?
No, so I, when, when we were when the Anthem claims were coming in, and we were literally like drawing down the fund to zero, like to the point that we couldn't fund a week, and we had to transfer money, I asked Lockton to just take raw numbers, exactly what we're paying out, to give me some type of projection so I could come here with a true blue number.
Right.
They will be giving me the actuarial number within the next month or so, because they like to wait as far as they can to hopefully get certain months
That's fair.
Dropping off for high claims.
Totally get it. The challenge is, we're doing the budget now.
Yeah.
So the budget, for the lineup for the medical then that we're putting in should be, I hate to say this, like, isn't it scarier than 12.9? Cause when they were in the actuarial tables, aren't they gonna say, if I see 11 this year, 11.1, and I see 12.9?
You're expecting that to
13.5, I hate to say it, yeah.
Why is that?
He showed the difference of 1.7, and we're putting a request, projecting a request of 2. So
Okay.
That's what, that's what that is. That's how we got the 2.
Okay. Yeah. All right, so then
And we don't want a bigger number than that.
No, no, I'm not
We're struggling with the 2.
But here's the thing, right? You, you respect reality first, and then you, you fight about it later, right? I mean, actuaries are gonna put together, the tables are gonna put together. Um, my, my, my question is around the root cause, and I get your point, that fighting the, the, what you cover medically is, is a different discussion. But I would just, I would be interested to understand the trend on this too, because then you could at least explain it. Cause part of what we are trying to do is explain, you know, why is the budget expensive? And if we knew the frequency And if we knew the frequency and severity, um, by major type of claim, that would start to give some clarity around that. But that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Dr. Hill?
So, we will get that information, which is gonna make sure that what we provide, based on the areas that you asked for, Mr. Madison, are clear enough. I believe they are, like, and we keep it as five thousand foot as possible. So, in general, what the public is gonna hear is pretty much what Mr. Batsholder's been saying for the last two months of meetings, that, you know, we've had some people who've reached the stop loss, and to make it even plainer for people, really high claims for really serious illnesses. So, we're gonna do the ICD thing?
Yep.
You know, that'll mean a lot to you, to the public. It's not gonna mean a thing, I know it's not. And I'm speaking for the public, 'cause they don't really care. They're just gonna, why is insurance so high? Because we've had some really high claims for serious illnesses. People understand words like cancer. They don't understand ICD, right? They understand births, or, or difficult births. They understand things like that, so, but we'll get the codes. Um... And again, understand it doesn't save us money. 'Cause I wanna be clear, we're not an insurance firm. I'm not gonna get into, you know,
I understand.
social media, or our current events, right? Why people are having issues with insurance companies? So, we don't do that in public education at this point. So, we're gonna continue to move down the road we moved down with insurance as a public entity.
That's fair.
All right. Um, are you all set, Mr. Madison?
No, I have two follow-ons to what Dr. Hill said, but...
Yeah, uh, so, um, so if, if an actuary, an actuary would actually look at the, the, the treatment, because what, what the claim was, right? And they would take that into account. And if this was a one-off, just this year, they would be able to factor that in, because they have much wider information.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because that clearly could be what it is. I mean, if a jump like this, uh, happens, I mean, uh, you know, some, some ailments are continual. Um, so, but that they, I, you know, you have a, a premature with, uh, pre-pre-premature birth with ailments, and it's gonna come to some point where it's gonna, it's gonna be reduced, you know? Um, uh, even cancer, because, you know, it's not gonna remain at the high level all the time. So, I mean, just because it was this, you know, especially since they seem to be, from what you said, an extraordinary number that go over the LAP, um, it would appear that there's, that, that, that this is not a, a new plateau, at least not at this level. I'm sure it's higher, that's for sure. It's, the, the issue is though, that it, it could be largely a one-off year. Is that correct? Or do you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna say anything?
I, I don't know.
Mr., I know we wanna make the public feel good, but I'm, I'm sorry Windsor Public, we can't. We just can't. Health is health. It's the same issue across the country, it's the same issue across the town, the city. I mean, the, the state, it's, we don't know. We just don't know. And so, we can pretend and tell ourselves, well, let's budget a smaller number. The claims are gonna come in, and we're gonna pay the claims.
And then we're gonna freeze out all the other budget line items to pay that?
Right.
Because it has to be paid.
We would love to predict a lower number, we really would. But this is just something out of our control.
All right. Mr. Madison?
Yeah, a few things, just to respond, Dr. Hill, to what you said. Um, part of the reason I'm asking for the information is so that my underst, my understanding, I wouldn't go running around to the public with ICD as my topic. All right, I got it, thank you. But I am also an elected official, and so I have a responsibility to the public as well. I just wanna understand it for myself, so that I can put it in simpler terms for everybody else, obviously. And just so you know, you, you, yeah, the reason you can't ask for the twenty specifics is then it can become identifiable, right? So, we have this, this problem all the time. Like, if I tell you, there's a seven-foot-four, uh, black male in the town of Windsor, Connecticut, ah, okay, that's like three people. Now, I'm not saying that's what would be on the medical record, but I'm just saying, that's an example I use a lot of times in my day job, that, that you can get identifiable very fast. Like, oh, look, there was one person who had a severe pregnancy, went over two hundred thousand, let's just say, and everybody knows that Ms. Jones had a severe pregnancy. Whack, you can map it that fast, right? So, I know that that's a violation of PHI, so I'm not asking, that's why I'm not asking for the twenty. But what, the reason I'm asking for the, the higher level is to, to, to infer categories. And that, that typically does wash things out. All right, just pointing that out.
I understand that.
All right. Any other questions?
Um...
Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I wonder if Mr. Rosario could, uh, talk a little bit more about the solar panels? There's anything more to, to, to say about this than what he put?
The question and answers?
Yeah, the, the, um...
What question number are you on, sir? Assuming the number eleven, last page, front of last page?
I guess so.
Ten. Ten.
Right, so this is, this is a fixable problem, then, is that the idea, the, uh?
I'm sorry, what question?
The, well, uh, I asked which have the solar panels, uh, uh, the, is, well, all three, you say on question thirteen. Um, all three sites, you had, you had, we have three sites, JFK, LPW, and all over, Allsworth, that's it. And, um, all three sites were taken out of service in July. Um, and, what is it, we, just like the, oh, so it was a, what prompted, okay, question thirteen is what prompted them to take this out of the fl, um... So, this, um, I'm just wondering if this is, um, you know, something that is gonna come back as another, as another problem? So, you've requested, okay, I see you've requested further information as to the findings, right? So, yeah, um... They, okay, you're gonna replace, and we're gonna replace the panels found to be deficient. So, they were, they were deficient in some way.
Correct, according to Tesla, um, that, some panels are deficient.
So, now, is this, is this done by, is this handled by the town? It should be handled by the town, right? Not, not us, not...
The initial contract was, um, done by the town.
Yeah.
And Tesla, yes.
Right, and, um, let me get us an idea of just how much electricity savings there were. Maybe you can add that to, I forgot to ask that question. And when they're fully in, because I remember we're saying that we had savings from them. Um, uh, is this a, this is a lease or a purchase? Or, or, you know, or, uh, something, you know, over time, we're just paying a, paying back a loan, or something?
No, the way I understand it, it's not a lease. We don't own the panels. The installer owns the equipment. They installed it at no cost to the town or the schools. And we purchase, or they sell us the electricity by kilo, kilowatt hour at five and a half cents per kilowatt.
Okay. Oh, that's quite a saving.
And the rest goes onto the grid.
Okay, well, this is, this still sounds like a decent deal, you say, it's a...
As long as it works.
Yeah, as long, yeah, and doesn't cause, doesn't cause a fire, right? There's to be electrical fire as possible, okay. All right, thank you, that's...
All right. Any other questions from the purple sheets? Mr. Wilson, Mr. King, any other questions from the purple sheets? I don't see any hands up, but I'm asking, just to make sure. Oh, they, they, I'm, I'm being assumptions they were sent to you, I apologize. Um, you can...
Okay.
Okay, you can email them, but, um, if you have questions, the, the sheet will be emailed to you. If you have questions at the end, just, just, um, raise your questions at that point. All right, gentlemen? All right. All right, we will go back into the budget book. We will start with, um, today's bracket, number five, salaries, which starts with page thirty-nine, goes to forty, to forty-one, yes, yes. So, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. All righty, any questions for Ms. Batsholder for salaries? Any questions? Mr. Wilson or Mr. King, any questions from you in regards to salaries? Um, could... All right, um...
No question.
All right, hearing none from online, I'll come back to the boardroom. Mr. Panos?
Um, was the increase in the non-certified was about eight percent, seven point eight percent? Um, is this due to an increase in the number of employees? Uh, I mean, why is it seven point eight? What, what drove it up that much?
So...
From last year?
Um, the additional monies, the additional, excuse me, positions from ESAR funding. Um, so we, we added...
Okay.
Okay.
What page were you on, Mr. Panos?
That was in forty.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you, sir. And are you satisfied with Ms. Batsholder's answer?
Uh, yes.
All right. Still recognizing, Mr. Panos, are you all set, sir?
I, I guess so, I, I have, um, the... Yeah, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, sir. Any other questions from the boardroom or online for salaries? At the risk of going too fast, is there any objection to moving on from salaries? Any objections?
No.
That's right.
Without objection, we will move away from salaries and go to employee benefits, which is on page forty-two and forty-three. Are there any questions in regards to employee benefits on page forty-two and forty-three? Mr. Wilson, Mr. King, just verifying, I don't see any hands. You're all set with this, with this group?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. King, Mr. Wilson? All right, he may be all set. And, Mr., Mr. Fury?
Uh, just, I guess again, a clarification, um, as, as Mr. Panos had on the last item. On page forty-three, it says the increase in benefits is sixteen point eight-six percent. And underneath that, it says increase is due to very high claim cost since August twenty twenty-four. So, is this mainly the insurance claim cost?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All set, Mr. Fury?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions about employee benefits?
Um, I wonder if...
Panos?
Uh, curious. Um, approximately how much, um, cost is for retiree health benefits? Do you have, you don't, I don't need that right now. But you, you can throw out a number roughly, I mean, we're looking at ten of twenty-five percent or five percent, or what?
So, the retiree benefits are, so it's every, everything is separate by bargaining unit. If you want an exact number, I would have to, um, do that math. But, um, so for teachers, if someone retires before age sixty-five, they pay a hundred percent of their insurance minus the TRB subsidy, which comes from the state to us directly. So, in essence, they're paying their full share of the premium. And pretty much every bargaining group now, we have grandfathered out those really nice insurance packages people used to get. And so, we don't pay for insurance like we used to anymore. Um, at most, one of our bargaining units, um, and again, it's only until sixty-five. Once they hit sixty-five, they have to go on to Medicare. Um, but the specific number I can get you, but it is, it's, it's low.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Panos, all set, sir?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions in regards to employee benefits? All right, I'm hearing none without objection. Um, looking to move away from employee benefits and go on to the appendices? Is there any objection? I am hearing no objection. Mr. Wilson, Mr. King, just verifying?
I'm all set.
All right. No objection heard, we'll move on to the appendices. Um, and Appendix A is the, um... Where's my Appendix A? Yes. All right. All right, Appendix B, any questions on Appendix B? And for the listening public, um, as we go through each appendix, Appendix B is the state and federal grants to Windsor Public Schools. Any questions on Appendix B? I am hearing none.
I have a question. Sorry. This is gonna sound horrible loaded, but I'm gonna ask it. If, if the Federal Department of Education gets shut down, all the funding stops, how much of effect does that have on us? It's reality.
Dr. Hill?
Well, I can't argue the, uh, grant amounts that are there written, but, um, quite honestly, I'm pretty one-hundred percent confident it's not gonna happen anywhere near as fast as people think, talking like years. So, it's much more of a, you know, I'm not being political here tonight, right? Tactic, scare thing. It, it takes a lot more than what the general public across the country thinks, and including our president, to shut down a whole department. So, that is nothing that's gonna cross our budgetary space for a while, even if it went into action. And while it be in years.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions, any questions about any of the appendices? Any of the appendices? And the catalog of the appendices?
Chairman, I do have a question about the, um, cafeteria food appendices, the student lunch one.
All right, let me go to that one. That is...
H fifty?
Appendix H, I believe. Recognizing, Mr. King?
I just have a question for, uh, the nation. If we were to say, uh, fund, like, I guess, what's the amount we, the amount we look at this? You have the amount of federally reimbursement? If, say, the town picked up the tab for all of the kids to have lunch free, do we still get federal reimbursement? Or do they actually have to pay and go through the program and already get that reimbursement? Just from our own netification?
Yeah, we, we would not get any reimbursement if the Board of Ed chose to pay a hundred percent of all the cost. Because the reimbursement is true, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are you all set, Mr. King?
Yes, I am, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about any of the appendices? Any other questions? I am hearing and seeing none about any of the appendices. So, at this point, we have gone through the entire budget book. I believe that there are questions that, um, a set of questions that Mr. Madison has asked for follow-up to the board. Um, at this point, I'm open to any discussion overall in regards to the budget. With the understanding that we are committee, we're not taking a vote, and this is, this is an opportunity for you to give your feedback about the budget as a whole, and to get, give any feedback as you see fit to the committee.
Mr. Harper, um, there are still being introductory pages.
Yes.
From the very, from the only available.
There are still what?
Introductory pages.
No, we took care of that, well... Oh, we, yeah, we took care of those. No, we, no, we, we took, I could've sworn, I, well, the first thing I took care of. Did I, did I miss it? Okay, I'm, okay, I'm, I'm human, I do make mistakes, I just wanna make sure. Okay, cause I, I got it written.
Being thorough.
So, thank you. No, I, I do have a time written here, like, it was done, so, okay. Thank you for keeping me honest. Any discussion? Open discussion of the board at this point, or the, excuse me, of the committee?
Before, Mr. Chair, I just wanna remind the board. So next year, when we go through this process, the entire appendices will be available online. So we will not be including it in our book because I will take, I've taken the suggestions that were given um, at the last few meetings about things to add to the glossary and explain. But this appendices, this is, um, overkill to keep putting it in this book, so it'll be online. So board members returning, elected, will be able to see this immediately once they're board members in the fall. So they're just to save time and be more efficient. Cause we shouldn't be continually going over the same things over and over again. A glossary is a glossary. Any numbers that need to be updated, they'll be updated, of course. But the glossary and the appendices are majority of things that we continue to go over each year. So that can be put online, it's nothing to be, and board members can see it at all times.
Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I, I, I looked over last year's questions and I didn't, we did not, for the most part, we did not repeat those same questions, so I don't know. And now we may talk, and we may ask specifically why instructional services, what, you know, but it's a different number, so it's appropriate. You know, if you come up, you know, this is a natural increase, I mean, sometimes it was, you have the, the, uh, the tuition dropped. Well, that's curious, why did that happen? So it, even though it's, it was, you can call it the same question, but it's appropriately reviewed each year.
I'm, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking to that at all.
I didn't see, I didn't see anything that was repeated.
That's why this is gonna be online, because this is pretty standard information. I'm not questioning about individual questions, but there, there's a lot of repetitiveness over years. I mean, we've both been doing this a long time, so I've heard a lot of the same questions for a lot of years. Not picking on anyone, but if we can make ourselves more efficient by putting certain things online, like the glossary and those kinds of things, that's all, it's efficiency. We, those are things that we don't need to have on an agenda to go over when we go through our budget book, those kinds of things, that's all.
Well, um, if I'm. Yeah, uh, one of the things that, uh, slows down, it may not have to be the major thing, you know, I, I kinda give you my suggestions, when we come up with terms that are, you know, just letters or something like that, it, it can slow you down. So what is this if it's not in back in the glossary? Or a, even a word, which, you know, doesn't go back into that, but you know, there should be another glossary for it. So we can, you know, like I said, uh, last time, we, we all have our jargon, if you can use that word, you know? Um, and you professionals grow very accustomed to using them. But, you know, up here, we don't hear them, so it, it kinda makes it a little rough to go through sometimes. And so that's one little addition. So I'll give you, like I have in the past, I'll give you my suggestions when I come across, you know, like, you know, throw them out, and you sort of, LAP, wow, there's it, well, you know what the LAP is? No? No. Okay. See, now that's the excess, that's the over two-hundred thousand dollars, that's the, the, the insurance. When the insurance goes over two-hundred thousand, we have what do you call it? Reinsurance or something that, uh, that covers it, right? So loss, something, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, that's him.
All right.
Uh, I, I, as a general, I, I, I think even the six point eight-eight is a bit much. That's, that's my, my general feeling here. Um, and, you know, um, may, we'll think about where we would, uh, make cuts. Uh, I would suggest that, uh, ESAR, some ESAR positions that were shifted to general fund, maybe what we would suggest, uh, because they weren't here before the COVID. Uh, that's a general comment. And I just, I think something, you know, should be below six, so that's why, you know, searching for the health benefits, that was the huge increase. Um, was we're very happy to say that, uh, that we, we asked a question about the technology thing and voila, you came up with six hundred thousand or five, close to it. And then, uh, that was good, I was hoping we'd come up with something like that for health.
All right. Anyone else wanna give commentary? Ms. Taylor?
Um, so thank you, uh, for reminding us about the, um, those, those ESAR, um, funded positions, um, and I appreciate that my colleagues, um, to the left of me, um, asked, asked the question, cause it was something that I, I wanted to, to kinda just get in there for the, the listening public. Um, so I guess I'll go to question eighteen. Um, and I appreciate the, the answer because oftentimes people wanna throw, you know, a number and not understand the implications of what the number could possibly mean. Um, so just for the listening public, because they don't have the information in front of them and neither do my colleagues, uh, over Zoom. Um, so just wanted to, to just real quick discuss the, um, the answer to question eighteen. So I'll, 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 I'll share what, what the question was. So it was what if budget scenarios, correct, Mr. Panos? Um, please, please.
With regard to ESAR, it was please provide a list, ESAR.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm at, I'm at eighteen, I was just.
Oh, sure.
My ESAR was, was just explaining, you know, just, yeah. Um, so question eighteen was what if budget scenarios? Um, please provide a list of budget cuts that you would make if there are only a five percent increase in the budget and, and further reduction to a four percent increase. So you didn't, um, answer in specifics, but I, I really appreciate the answer. So the answer that was shared was every one percent is roughly nine hundred and one thousand dollars. The average budget amount used when increasing or decreasing the budget is seventy-five thousand. This would equate to twelve teachers for every one percent, the, the BOE cuts. Five percent equals a dollar reduction of, of about one million, six hundred ninety thousand dollars or twenty-two point five FTEs. And, uh, lastly, the four percent question, uh, equals a dollar amount, uh, reduction amount of about two million, five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars or thirty-five, um, FTEs. So I don't have much of a question here because this kinda lays things out, but I just wanted to share that information for the listening public. And for, uh, Mr. Williston and Mr. King. Thank you.
All right. As, Mr. Fury?
Uh, thank you. Um, again, not, uh, not to go into a great deal, um, and I'm not sure where I am on, 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 on voting any percentage, um, at this time. But I, I do wanna make a statement regarding that this budget is, um, a maintenance budget. There's no new programs. Things like major maintenance, one of, uh, Mr. Lockhart's favorite items and one item that we were burned on before with what happened with Oliver Ellsworth, does flat funding. We know prices are going up for materials. So to flat fund major maintenance, I, I, I thank Dr. Hill for trying to keep things away from classrooms and cuts in classrooms. Um, and, uh, we know there's gonna be an election coming up in the fall, so any promises, even if it's a handshake from members of town council of how they'll bail us out, if there's a major problem, um, at a, at a school that doesn't really equate to CIP, but really recreates to, um, a big major maintenance item, um, is really null and void because we don't know who's gonna be on the next council or the next board. Um, I, I personally would like to see more building subs. Um, I believe that, you know, often building subs are out. So you may have two or three teachers out and then you have a couple of building subs out. And so whenever you could, the purpose of the building subs, I, the concept has been great. Um, to have people who know the buildings are in various classrooms versus a sub from Kelly Services or someplace else who may play, you know, they go to the, the teacher's lesson plans and they may end up playing a video. Um, it's not the same type of learning as a, a full teacher, but, you know, having a building sub's better to me than someone who, who just comes in randomly into our building. So I think that's been great, we've saved money, um, because we don't have to pay a lump sum uh, for a third party. Um, but, you know, realistically, I'd love to see, uh, to see that increase. And so, um, uh, it, the reality is with reval, we understand. Um, and we understand the two million dollars, I'd love to pass that back to the town. We don't have a rainy day fund. The town does have funds available. And I'd love to, if we could, kick the can to them to use that, those funds. If we had it, we'd use it, we don't. So those are my only comments, thank you.
All right, Mr. Madison?
Quick question, eighteen. Um, it talks about FTEs, how many FTEs do we have broken down by teacher and non-teacher currently?
Um, so if you go to page one D, it breaks it out as certified versus non-certified.
Thank you.
Yep. But it's, you know, roughly four hundred certified under general fund and two twelve.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. King, I recognize you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of general comments, and I'm sorry I'm not in the room right now. Um, but I wanted to thank the chairman for having a expedient and efficient process throughout this. I think it was really, really good. I also wanted to recognize Madam Vice President for, uh, tagging us in who are hybrid, where we don't have the forms in front of us and letting us know, like, what's being discussed and what's going on. I'm sorry, I really appreciate that. And then finally, I just wanted to say to anybody that's paying attention to any of this, right? Uh, two things. One is, um, I don't think any of us, at least in Democratic Caucus, came here to lay off teachers. And I don't think we want to do that. So the voting public needs to let their voices be heard if that's not something they're into. Um, and secondly, I would say is, you know, the governor's budget has our, uh, educational cost sharing grant at flat next year and the year after. And if you're at home and you happen to be listening to this or watching this, um, in a world where five, six, seven percent increases are going to be the norm between contracts and, uh, rising fuel costs and other, other costs across the board, to keep our ECS grants flat means that it's gonna continue to push a burden onto the taxpayer in town. So I strongly recommend folks reach out to their elected representatives at the state level as well. Um, those folks that represent us, like Senator Douglas McCrory, uh, Marion Todd, Jane Garibay, and let them know, hey, that's not acceptable because those are things that are gonna help us deal with the constant shifting, uh, costs and increasing costs that we're gonna experience over the next time. But, uh, that's it for me, and thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Halleck?
Uh, thank you. Um, as was, was mentioned at the beginning of this process, we are in the second half, in the second half, and plus, as we all know, the general cost of living has gone up, um, for everybody, um, in, including our taxpayers. I, I, I don't think we wanna put, you know, taxes on top of taxes and on top of the cost of living on, on our residents anymore than we, than we have. They, they just absorbed an, an over five percent increase, uh, last year from us as well. Um, on the other, and I do also believe that the board needs to have a conversation um, about our, about our security measures. I know we talked about cameras and metal detectors. Um, that might be, be an executive session thing, but I, I think that's really something we have to have a tough conversation about and look at doing it as well because we, we have, we have to keep everyone in our buildings safe and we need to make sure of that on a, on a day-to-day basis. So I, I just hope we keep all that in mind as we move forward here. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussions? Mr. Williston, do you have any comments before I make final comments?
No final comments.
All right, Dr. Hill? Any comments? Okay.
I don't know, I was like, thank you, guys.
I, I, I think you presented the budget, right?
Right, right.
That was a good, that was a comment.
Appreciate that. Thank you for listening and, you know, we're, we're here to do what we have to do for the students.
All right. Well, as, uh, Mr. President stated, this is a maintenance budget. Um, typically, Dr. Hill and I go head-to-head on budgeting. Um, I'm actually in agreement with this particular budget. Um, I do have my, my personal wish list, but based off of situations that were stated, especially just by, recently by Mr. Halleck, um, we are in a reavow situation. So any additional, um, things will probably be very difficult for the town. Um, I, I, I do want us to caution that, um, funding from the state can be, also be impacted by the lack of funding coming back from the federal government. Um, we don't know what the impact of federal funding coming into the state's gonna look like. And if the governor through, in consultation with the leadership of both sides of the aisle in the Senate and the House of Reps, um, gonna have to really come off some cushioned, then cushion money in the rainy day fund to get the state through a difficult time. Um, there's some, there's some uncertainty there. So at the end of the day, um, we knew what to cut. If we were cutting, it was not gonna be programs, it was gonna be, unfortunately, employees. And that's a position, me personally, I'm not in favor of. Um, I wanna make sure that we continue to provide the supports that we have in place that we absorb through ESAR, especially with the interventionist. Um, especially, um, we gotta continue to focus on tier two, tier three. Um, we gotta make sure that we continue to be, remain steadfast in the area of special education and to continue to support this, um, to support Dr. Hill in his efforts to bring a lot of that, those special education, um, matters back in-house and to be able to absorb them, um, without paying the high outplacement costs. And a lot of times, we know, sometimes, um, it's just not the cost of placement, but it's the transportation that's associated with it as well. So, um, I believe this, 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 this committee is in agreement that two million dollars is, uh, was an unexpected jump. And I'm of the opinion that I, I don't wanna have to absorb a two million this year and then next year we go back to, for example, a flat funding. But I think it was articulated to us, we are, we are hemorrhaging, we're in the hole, and that, that two million dollars is just to, just to get us through. So, uh, we've requested more information, but I will vigorously defend the budget as is. Um, we do have, as a board, we, we wanna get the school district, um, to the, to, to different levels of achievement. We wanna make sure that we keep the staff that we have on hand, um, especially our younger teachers. I, I don't wanna see any, cause if we lose teachers, it's gonna be the majority of the newer teachers. And those that, you know, and that, that would be unfortunate because we have some good teachers here up and down the chain. And to lose twenty-two teachers would be devastating. To lose thirty-five teachers would be even more devastating with larger cuts in the classrooms. I think that's something realistically, none of us want across this dais. But at the same time, we have a fiscal responsibility to the town to present a responsible budget to the town council. So I am eager to see what the, um, process will look like at the next meeting in, um, next Tuesday, no, next Wednesday, I believe. Um, but I support the budget as presented. Um, we all know that our superintendent is very, very fiscally conservative and he wants, you know, if, if he, this is what he feels he can run the district, um, I think we, we owe him that, that responsibility. But we also understand that the town is in a tough reavow, so I do understand that. So this will not be a year that I will ask for more stuff. Um, it's just not, it's just not, not available.
I am disappointed.
But you know what?
Hopefully, this is being, this is being recorded.
Uh, but you know what, I'm. I'm... You know what? I'm... I... I understand. This is me. I'm not a doppelganger. Um, I understand that this is a maintenance budget. That's how this budget was designed. And my goal is to make sure that we maintain every single employee through this budget and they're with us on July first if they wish to be here